And we're gonna say the pledge, and I'm gonna ask Alderman Betts to lead us in prayer.
The town of Adaliae, board of Alderman Rocco for its regular meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman Day, March 12th of 2019. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is noted to be absent. Alderman McCoy. Alderman McCoy noted to be absent. Alderman Probst.
Yes.
Mayor of the board of the board is present.
Okay, alright. We have a quorum, so first item that we need to do is, we have two sets of minutes to approve. We had a previous meeting and a special meeting. They're there for your review and looking at, and if there's no questions, I'd like entertain a motion to accept these minutes.
I say move.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, second by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item, agenda item number one is a review of our financial statements for January by our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moke.
The financials for tonight's meeting have been distributed to the aldermen and to the department heads. They include the balance sheet as of January 31st, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the seven months ending January 31st, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. The balance sheet is as of January 31st, is a statement of assets, liabilities, and fund balances at a particular point in time, and it indicates that the cash is at 4.2 million, which is, of which 2 million is in the hydro royalty fund. It has investments of 3.8 million, total assets of 32.6 million, total liabilities of 6.8 million, and a fund balance of 25.8 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the seven months ended January 31st is a statement of total revenues, expenses, capital outlay, and other financing sources and uses over a period of time. The statement indicates that the combined revenues are at 25.5 million, total expenditures at 22.7, for a net change in position of, for a change in net position of 2.9 million. The town should have approximately 42 percent remaining in the projected expenses. Overall, we are at 57 percent remaining in expenditures and 60 percent in revenues. If all the expenses and revenues were received and paid out, then at the end of the fiscal year, the projection would show a decrease in net position by $301,000. This decrease is primarily due to a transfer that was made from the industrial park fund to the utility fund during the time that the project blew. We received the money in to pay their utilities to catch it up, and we had to transfer it out, so that's where most of the $301,000 is. The town is currently in good financial position. We are where we should be according to the budget, and we are maintaining cash flow. The 2019-20 budget process is, will begin next week. Meetings have been set up for all department heads and aldermen who can attend. The town's current financial position is being carefully monitored in the event actual expenditures and other uses and actual, and projected expenditures exceed the total budget, so that by 5 percent or more, the mayor will advise the board if that's, when that happens. The, this applies to revenues and other sources and fund balance also, and a budget analysis is presented in your packet, which shows this 5 percent calculation and where we are at January 31st.
Thank you, Deborah. Any questions? If not, I would like to invite any of the public, if they ever want a copy of this, of what she reads off and what she gets her information from. It's available. All you have to do is request it, we'll be glad to give it to you, or even sit down with you and go through it, anytime you'd like. We'd certainly like to do that, so. No further questions on that. Item number two, we have occupational license. The first one is, it might not be in your packet, we got this late. We have, the Bud Hut is being, is being bought by Kim Kinsey. Is she here tonight? Kim, okay, is that Kim? Okay. Oh, is he here tonight? Okay. Kim, are you planning on making any changes or continuing the good food, or?
Well, I mean, we are gonna make some changes. Just a little history of it. Most people right here know me from Kinsey Electric.
Yeah.
And, but at the same time, I've actually got 30 years background in restaurants as well. I've been doing consulting on restaurants for the past 10 years also. But we are gonna make some changes in Bud Hut. Nothing physically as far as the location is concerned, but we are doing some expansions on the food, some different retraining of staff, some things we are going to expand out. Based on what I've got on current projections, I anticipate roughly a 35 percent increase of revenue this year.
Wonderful.
With what we have planned, and I think it will be something that is gonna be unusual in, in the additions that we're going to do, so the changes that we're gonna make, I think it will be something that the city of Adaliae will enjoy.
Well, we wish you all the luck, and thank you for choosing us to, and furthering that business, and we look forward to, can't wait to see what it is. But anyway, thank you. Go ahead.
April 1st is when I was supposed to take it.
Okay, one. Well, if we can do anything for you, let us know. If we can do anything for you, please let us know.
Go to the second.
Okay, alright, Kim. Do I hear a motion, we accept this occupational license?
Motion accepted.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, here, second.
Second.
Second made by Alderman Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is a outdoor sign application. Kenesha Williams, at 400 Carter Street, front of the building above the entrance level will be a plastic acrylic cut sign. I think she's got a demonstration there, picture, any questions on that?
The demonstration looks like there's another sign of a pole over here.
I see that, and that's, um...
I mean, not that either one of them wouldn't be approved, but it's just not listed on this application, so we don't want her to be involved.
Right, she, they just have the one for the, above the door entrance.
Yeah.
But I do see the one you're just in question, and I'm, who, uh...
Are you here? Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
It's just the one over the door, right.
Okay, so the one on the left is not, and it's, you're not asking for that at this point? Okay, alright.
What is this, can I ask her what this is gonna be?
Sure.
I know we've already approved it, but I'm really curious, I have forgotten.
It's gonna be events, what I'll be doing, I'll be doing baby showers and everything, any kind of formal dinner. I decorate those, I'll be reading some COs, some formal meeting later, because it's gonna be, so we have the luck sound, so, get bad, get cool.
Good, okay, I remember it now, I'm sorry. I make the motion, we approve.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Doray, here, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have our board consideration of bids submitted for the new utility bucket truck, and I have three bids, and we will open those now. The first bid is going to be from, well, I don't know yet, let's say it's gonna come from Versalift Southwest. And we did ask for two prices on this. We asked for a cash price as well as a lease option. There's several pages. Okay, the price summary, with all of the installation details and all of the additions to it, the net price is 200 and 2,615 dollars.
Except the cash price?
That is the, I will note that I don't see a, this is a cash price, this is not a lease payment. But let me see if there's a lease option that they have that I'm not seeing here at this point.
Who is that, bud?
This is, uh, this is Versalift Southwest LLC out of Waco, Texas. And these will be available for review, anybody would like to review these, but I haven't seen a lease option in here.
That's what we're looking for, right, Lee?
No, that's Mark, Mr. Park.
I mean, Mark.
Mr. Park.
I meant Mark. Because that's what we're looking for, right? Lease or cash price?
You prefer a lease, though, yeah?
Love to guess one.
I think, well, there's...
He just wants a truck. Give me a truck.
Just note that, just please note that, that this one does not have a lease option in it, and will.
Mayor, it was on the bids that were noticed in the paper. It was, bids should be submitted with cash price and lease with buyback.
Both. So, unless these other, if they come in lower, I won't be too concerned, but we'll just see what the rest of them say. Okay, this bid is gonna be from T-Rex out of Birmingham, Alabama. This has a, a cash price of 208,324 dollars. And also, it does have a, a lease option. And that lease option is 45,636.50 a month.
How much?
For 60 months. Pardon?
The amount?
The amount was 200, oh, the, the, the 60-month lease was 45,636.50. That's, and I'm, oh, yeah, that's 60 months. That's the annual payment, that's not the, and then the annual payment for 72 months is 38,776.18. In 84 months, they have 33,883.69. And a, a total cash price of 208,324. Okay? The last one that we have is gonna be from Altech Industries. And of course, all these would be to make sure we reviewed that they came with the equipment that was stated in the, in the bid process. Okay, the cash price is 196, 495, 196,495 dollars. That is the cash price. As with the first one we have, I haven't seen a, a lease option. I'm gonna ask John if he will look behind me to make sure. I'm not overlooking a lease option in this. Which I didn't see. Oh. One of the things to consider as we, as we look at this, is that will be the low bid. However, I think, looking long, long-term, from a strategy standpoint, Mark, I know you wanna keep, you know, very good equipment for the, for the job these guys do, you know, when they're up in the air at 12 and 1 o'clock at night, raining and cold wind, they want, they need good equipment. And we know we have the best of the best doing our work for us, we wanna make sure we keep them in good equipment, so. However, I think at some point, we should maybe consider, you know, getting at the end of some of these, that we've serviced and maintenance at the end of the leases, maybe do a purchase, if we do go with a lease option. So, I will take any kind of consideration. We have, we had two options that didn't have lease payments in there. I would just, maybe, at the recommendation of the board, that you might would let us check, do whichever one, see what those lease options might be on those two, that they didn't turn those in, and either come back or give me authority to do the one that would be the cheapest, you know?
How much was included in the budget for this truck?
165.
165?
Which, that's what they, I think the previous one, that was probably 2,000 and...
55 years ago, it was.
Yeah.
If, if I heard you correctly, if we did the lease from T-Rex with, with payments for 60 months of 5,636.50, we'd end up paying 338,000, where we have a cash price offer at 196.
If that, on T-Rex, it didn't come with a...
Yeah, T-Rex did.
T-Rex did.
Only had the lease.
Oh, yeah.
He was the highest, and, and gave the lease.
Yeah. But I mean, that's, that's 130,000 dollars extra just to lease it. I, I like that.
Is that, was, it was annually, how much was it?
I thought I heard you say that it was 56,3650 per month, is that correct?
No, 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 40.
5,036.50.
No, that's an annual payment. Annual payment was 45,636.50 for 60 months.
Gotcha. Alright, let's, uh...
That times, that times five.
That's five years, 25, 636.
It's still gonna be, but it's not gonna be 300, it's gonna be, how much you get? Because that's a lot of interest, because the rates, I think the rate on that was...
That's another 20,000, so that was, I misheard you, I apologize, yeah? So, 20,000 dollars interest to lease it with the option to buyback, does that lease provide us any type of warranty or repairs? Or is that just based...
It would be under warranty for that lease period. I, I mean, other than your, you know, normal maintenance, tires, things of that nature, oh...
Do you prefer to lease or, or purchase? Just bought them out? I'm, I'm a...
You're not as rough as that garbage truck.
And I, and look, I'm open to do whichever, I mean, I'm, I'm open to do, if you wanna do the purchase or the lease, it doesn't matter to me, that's all.
I prefer to pay cash for it.
That's, that's whatever the board's pleasure is.
We gotta up the, up the 165.
Yeah. I mean, we'll have to do a, a budget amendment as a result?
Well, if, if, if we fall within the guidelines, of course, we, we still got money and capital outlay that Mark hasn't spent, of course, we have monies that we have approved, that we hope, which we're gonna talk about a little bit when we talk about, we get to the flood control report. You know, everybody's been real frugal this year on, on not spending money, that they, we have tightened the belt these few years, and we, we've turned a corner and we, we're starting to accumulate this cash. Now we need to start, you know, addressing some concerns that we've got, for sure. I will talk about those in a minute, but I feel like that, you know, as long as we don't violate our goal without that percentage of the 5 percent, you know, even though that's in the utility fund, I believe that we would be fine within our budget right now to, to handle that.
Well, I may that we accept the cash price from Altech with it being the lowest bid, assuming that Mark looks over the schematics and, and makes sure that it's exactly what you've requested.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Doray, here, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor? Okay. With item number five, the flood control report, I'm gonna ask Guy to say something here in just a second. You want me to go first? Okay, I'm gonna go first. Okay. Okay. What I would like to, for everybody to know is that, what I'm gonna say here is, this is strictly for information, this is strictly precautionary, this is, nobody is saying anything is gonna flood, nobody has said any levee's gonna break, nobody, none of those projections are out there. So, really, so nobody, do not get alarmed by what I'm gonna say. For example, many of you have kids, and y'all all have a, a, a fire escape, you also have smoke alarms, in case you were to have something in your house, that is a method of preparation that you have for your personal self and for your family and your home. Just like when we had school shootings or church shootings, our police department and our fire department has worked with schools, they've worked with churches, to give them a method of preparation in the event something were to happen. So, please, when I say, when I talk about some things, this is strictly from that same perspective. We're not saying, this is not a, a warning or a danger sign for y'all to go and go, the mayor said this is gonna happen. There's nobody forecasting any of this stuff. However, we do have a high river, that's probably one of the highest that we've had for this time of year. And all I feel like is, is, and my responsibility to you as, as being the mayor here, is to tell you that, you know, I'm gonna talk to you on a personal level, what I did in 2011, I moved my furniture out over to Mississippi, and I got flood insurance, and I told myself I'll never do that again. And I'm not gonna do that again. However, if something were to be a, a, a prospect for something happening, which I'm saying it's not, it's a personal decision whether or not you wanna get flood insurance, it's a personal decision whether you want to, you know, kinda get your, you know, things that are, family heirlooms or pictures or whatever it might be, that you just have, where you get your hands on them and do something with them, if you had to. So, all I'm wanting to say is, as a family or as a resident, just make precaution, or have somewhere to maybe go if something were to happen, to make those plans ahead of time when there's no danger. Right now, there's not a danger, even though we do have, you know, you ride over there and look, the river, it is a little scary. But I'm not causing, I don't want you to tell you this from, from an alarming standpoint. I want you to know that as a town, I met with department heads to just, you know, to go over what they did in 2011, just for my information. And we have a plan that we, we have formulated on what to do with things in the event something were to happen. Precautionary, nothing to be alarmed about. I feel like that I have complete faith in our core of engineers, that things they have play in place as far as safeguards, that we're alright, and that we would have, something were to be a danger, they will give us plenty of advance notice of something that, you know, that we would have to do. All I'm saying now is while there's no danger, you know, it's a personal decision if you wanna go buy insurance, because the, the spring thaw has not happened, you know? Right now, they're projecting that if it's a slow thaw, there's gonna be a non-event. If it's a slow thaw, that's gonna, that's gonna just be spread out over time, there's not gonna be a problem. However, there's always a possibility, in the event you were to have something serious with a, a heat wave go through and melt all the snow and, and, frozen water up there, it could, and couple that with some rains in the, in the Mississippi Valley and up above, there's a possibility. So, all I'm saying is, you as a family, just be informed, just in watching news, and just listen to what the experts say. Don't listen to, talk around the, you know, the breakfast or lunch table or supper table, just look at what the experts are telling you. Guy with our, is, is done a good job with keeping us informed and knowing those targets and, and triggers that we need to, if we were to have to make decisions. So, everybody is doing their job, they're watching everything, and I just wanted you to have comfort in knowing that if something were that you needed to know, we would certainly let you know it. So, if you don't hear anything, you know, just continue to watch and listen to the right people, which is the core engineers, the National Weather Service, and those people as far as getting your information. And if they make that available to us, I promise you, I will do everything possible to get that information to you. But if you think there's things that could take you a long time to do and put together, I would just ask you to go ahead and prepare for those things. For example, we will, we, we wanna go ahead and have a place where we could take, let's say, all of our movables, all of our trucks, if something were to happen, we could move all the stuff to protect the town's assets to get them out of the town, if something were to happen. That's just being prepared, just like you preparing your family for a fire in your house. You know how unlikely that is, or, you know, a school shooting, this is strictly preparedness, okay? So, nothing to be alarmed about, but we want you to know that if you have questions, we'll be glad to give you all the information we got, and, and things that we can, can do to help you, you know, to protect you, because you are, you are who we're concerned about, okay? So, having said that, Guy, I'd love for you to...
I'm open for questions.
Okay. The only other thing I will add before Guy, you're welcome, I would like for you to ask Guy questions, I'm gonna put him on the spot. One of the things I do want you to know, please bear with us, because subsurface infrastructure in our town and our streets, y'all, they're taking a heavy hit right now, they're taking a heavy toll. I mean, we also have sinkholes developing in our streets, we also have some sewers that have, actually, you see by Johnny Mays, those issues there? And until the water goes down, we're not gonna be able to address those, because you can't fix any of that until those things go down, okay? So, just bear with us, I know a lot of people are upset about their streets, as, as well as I am, but until we can get in there and, and fix them and fix them right for you, we're gonna wait for that water to go down, and they tell us that it's good to go in and fix those areas. And until that time, we just have to manage what we have, because we don't know what's gonna happen when the water goes back out, or where the sinkholes could show up. But if you around, your residents have any kind of issues that you are concerned about, please call us, and I promise you, we'll send somebody right around to address those needs, should that happen, so. That's just why I'm just asking for a little bit of help and patience there as these things develop, so. Guy, if anybody got any questions for Guy?
I got one.
Okay.
Talking about the high water. I work for the ASL, bringing out several, and I'm taking consideration, the city of Dade, the core of engineers will not let you dig right now, period.
That's correct, that's correct.
The concrete work, we can't go, the core engineer is stopping the town, like you said, the sewer and all that, it's my husband's fault or, or his fault, the core engineer, which is federal government, stop shut that. You cannot dig a two-foot hole right now without the core engineer's permission. So, the street problems, the city's problems, we have no control of it, federal government overrides us. To do it, it's our plan. Back to the city of Dade, but for a result, we need work down there, we can't dig. The order is, you cannot break any dirt back.
And that's, that's exactly, Gary, thank you, that, he's exactly right what he's saying. We have been mandated to not go into those things, so. Ms. Corrine?
As an old resident, I can tell you, I think the board needs to put these dredge boats back. Now, if you can imagine the Mississippi River, and down bringing all that topsoil and silt, we're back where we were when they widened the river some 60 years ago, okay? Every three years, we had the dredge boat that I can remember named the Cat. Where all these buildings are, that was topsoil, that was dredged out of the Mississippi. My problem is, I do not understand how the federal government and FEMA can pay all these people for their homes and not do some homework of dredging. That's why your river's hot, it hasn't been dredged in I don't know how many years.
Ms. Corrine, that, thank you for those, and Ms. Corrine does a wonderful presentation on, on when they moved the, the city of Dade. She was one of the ones that was, was here and, and does a real good program on that, and if you ever get an opportunity to hear that program, you need to do that, so.
But really, and truthfully, the river, if you can imagine, when I grew up, is a third of what it is now. And it has widened because they haven't done any more work on, and we were the narrowest point of the Mississippi River in 1935, between Cairo, Illinois and New Orleans.
Yes, ma'am.
And they widened, they had dredge boats here.
Yes, ma'am.
But after that, every three years, when I was a teenager and on up, we had a dredge boat that was putting that sand back against the levees.
I, I think all of us that have lived here have seen, over the last few years, that we have a significant event almost every year, it seems like, that we do have a risk of possibility of flooding. And right now, from what I've understood, and I, I spent a lot of time last week talking to different ones, they're, they're, they're building models right now of why that's happening. One of those is that very reason, Ms. Corrine, is they've reached instituting the dredging deal. But from what they're telling us is back when they did channelize the Mississippi River, like they did do it now, you know, they took away where, when it got up and going into the lower parts of the state, it would, it would flood out over all those areas around, you know, Morgano, it's a spillway there, and Bonneclaire and all those, that, those things built up with all that silt down there, and it, the river would naturally flow, where when they narrowed, narrowed the channel, all that sediment stayed within that channel, and it's, and it just don't hold the volume that it used to. Plus, what are the effects of global warming, if you believe that or not? But they're trying to create models to, to, you know, determine what's the best way to handle it going forward, so. And that's, they're, they're, they're the experts, they're the ones, that they're very sharp on that, and I trust them to do the right thing, and, so, that's, that's what I have to say. that's, that's what I have to say on that. Yeah, and that could be a possibility for sure. Any question, any questions or more from, uh, Guy or anybody? Anybody have any question me or? Morganza, there's, like Guy says, there's a book about that thick of the different things that, uh, targets they have to hit before they open it. I think in two thousand eleven, they opened it at what, what was the water level, Guy, when they opened it?
The water was forecasted to go to sixty-four feet. And I think they opened it, I'd have to go back and look to answer that actively, but I think they opened it right below, uh, sixty or so. But the, the, the way the river gauges work, we have a different river gauge than what the river gauge is down there. The two numbers did not correlate, so I would have to go back and look to answer that. But it's, it's a velocity thing, it's a, uh, the height of the river, but it's, it's an operational procedures manual that was drafted back when the structure was built. And that's what they followed and, and they did not do any extra.
One of the other things, probably why they haven't opened it, because the forecast is going, is crested and it's heading down. So, they, they don't see the need probably to open it at that time. Now, if you had a forecast of going probably much higher than that, they would've probably went ahead and pulled the trigger on that. It's just, and that's just a guess of mine, but, uh, that's, that's just, just what we think, so.
So, they've never considered opening it until, to not let it get to the point of where it affects, like Vidalia? I mean, it's kinda like not, just crack it open to where it'll kinda affect the river low and...
If, if you talk to the Corps, they'll tell you that the Morganza's not gonna help us. That's what they'll, they'll say, that that's not gonna see an impact up this high. What the Morganza would do is protect New Orleans, basically. Now, if you, if you go in... But, but Morganza, they said, if you, if you'll read, if you go onto the, uh, the Corps and read about each one of their, their, their locks, they'll tell you what they're in place for. And I think if I'm not mistaken, Morganza was, the main thing it would protect is New Orleans if they pulled it, you know? I don't think so.
And Guy, is it true that, isn't it true that what does help us is above us? There, there are still ways above us and I, I'm not familiar with the name of them, but they're, they're continuously operating those structures based on snowpack, rainfall, things like that. There's, there's things that work with everybody, um...
Because not only the river affects us, the backwater. We've had backwater in Vidalia that was, uh, three feet high. Vias, you can now, you can't drain out because they're, they're going, the river, the river's higher than that.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, one of the things I do want you not to get alarmed about, for example, if you read about a lot of the stuff up in the north, they are predicting flooding for the north. But keep in mind, for example, the Quad Cities where Davenport, uh, Minn-Doroth or some of them, when you go up there, and I've been there, those, those, they call the Quad Cities. We had, uh, annual meeting there last year. When you look at that, that you're going like, oh, my goodness, they don't have but a three or four foot fluctuation. They call of, if it goes up three or four foot, that's a flood to them. Whereas down here, we got forty and fifty foot fluctuations, you know? So, they have a, a series of locks and dams up there that they control their water with and, and, and that's, like I said, way up, you know, that they, uh, so if you read that up there, don't let that alarm you because by the time it comes down, it's usually a non-event here. Johnny, go ahead. We have, we have discussed things, Johnny, in preparation, well, that we will want to get ahead of anybody who would be shut in or something like that, that don't have the means to have anything of identifying who those people would be and, and doing that. As far as getting word out to the people, it would, uh, we would use every, in, in advertising and, and word of mouth, Facebook, radio, and to let people know. Uh, and again, this would be something that... Well, we, there's, uh... Well, we, we've talked about them. I mean, and the main thing to do is identify people who couldn't. But that's one of the things we wanna do is, we feel like if you were to have something happen, that there's a, there's a, there's a few days there that you have to, to make preparation. And that's what we've been told and, and that's why, that's why when I say be, be prepared, hey, if something were to happen, you know, if you have the things that you know that you can leave with and you're prepared to pick up and go, you're gonna be one of those. But if, if you don't, if you're not prepared, like it is if a fire happens, you know? And see, for, for example, just, you'd have, need to have some place to take them if you wanted to, so.
Trailer them, if it, no. Trailer them. Even in the event of an emergency, you can't just, no, it's not okay.
Maybe they would be forgiven if police stopped you, but I don't know.
I have a statement and question. Uh, the statement is, I know a lot of people are concerned about Morganza and following a lot of, uh, people down in South Louisiana. And a lot of those people are encouraging, uh, the citizens of Louisiana to contact their representatives and ask them to reevaluate the guidelines for opening Morganza. So, you know, if you wanna get involved, you know, write your representatives and, and say, hey, let's reevaluate, you know, what our, what we're doing to, before we're opening. And the other, the question that I have is, uh, did you, you, I did read in the paper that you were in DC for, uh, to talk with other mayors. Can you tell us a little bit about that and, you know, if, what exactly that was about some of the...
Okay. Uh, on Tuesday night, we met with a lot of the top brass with the Corps of Engineers, as well as all the colonels from the upper, upper stem of the Mississippi River. Uh, they, they went over the issues for snowpack and, and it is an above normal snowpack and it's got water that's dense in it. But again, it's not to be alarmed if it's a slow thaw and you don't have a, a major rain and a quick thaw. It's gonna be a non-event. I mean, uh, and that's one of the things that we talked about. We also talked about those things I told you about, what they're doing to be able to have, create better models to maybe predict, you know, uh, whether, you know, what they can do to alleviate this thing is, is propped up to be, uh, a constant issue. This year's been, this is what they call, we called last year's cold weather an anomaly. You've had, you've had a wet, wet year, all the way from South Louisiana, all the way up to Canada, all the way up that basin where everything's saturated. Everything is filled up with water, all your reservoirs are full, your, your, your ground up there is frozen. So, when it does thaw out, that ground's not gonna absorb that water, it's gonna put it into the channel. So, that's some of the things that, you know, they went over and that's why they just, they just on the side of caution, not scaring everybody, not warning, just being on the side of caution to watch what's going on and stay informed. And they are, they're gonna promise sure to us, they'll do their job to keep us informed. But right now, they're saying there's, there's not any alarm based on what this, what they, that they're showing now. Uh, the, the twenty-eight day forecast is based on forty-eight hours, but right now, if, based on that, it's showing that by, within twenty-eight days, the river will be down just under flood stage. Forty, forty-seven feet is, is the projection on today's, on today's, uh, internet. The rest of the week, uh, we've, obviously with, uh, several of our, our congressmen and our senators, John Kennedy and, uh, Bill Cassidy was in Bill's office and John, uh, met with, in meetings and discussing, you know, things that, uh, we wanna premitigate the possibility of our riverfront is one of the things that we know that we have to deal with. We got our water wells over there, but we've, we left the Hesco baskets up on those. And I'm not taking that down because that was an expensive endeavor and I'm not gonna take that down, spend that money. It doesn't look good, but, uh, until we can either address that and get the, the pumps risen to, I mean, raise them to a level that's safe, that'll be above a, a flood thing. Mark could talk more about that. Uh, we're gonna leave that Hesco basket up. But it's, it's the premitigation to protect our riverfront each year and day and, rather than going in and spending money and then hoping that, that FEMA's gonna reimburse us on those monies. Uh, in April, I, uh, Bill and, and also John and also, uh, I met with Ralph Abraham as well. They're assuring me that they're gonna try to get that, uh, they're coming out with the guidelines in April on what you have to do to get those funds to, to premitigate that happening every year. You can have something in place to prevent having a flood with Hesco baskets every year. You'll have something in place that we won't have to deal with this on the riverfront. Because honestly, that's something that we'll probably have to address on a, almost an annual basis, the way it looks like. Uh, as far as our residents concerned, I think the things, the seepage water, the sinkholes and things of that nature is something that we'll have to look at and deal with. It'd be more concerning for, for us as residents on this side of the levee. If that ain't, did I answer?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, just, you know, I just wanted to make sure, uh, you know, that was what we were doing. We're, we're keeping in contact with other mayors. You know, I think what I heard you say basically, it just doesn't, um, is that just because, you know, they're gonna flood up north, doesn't that mean they're...
That's exactly right. That doesn't mean that. That's exactly right. Because, and, and, and other, I'll tell you something else. Uh, this is good news too for, uh, trying to find out more and more things for our river, uh, our convention center. Viking Cruise Line is still online to be putting ships and, uh, we've also had strong conversations. Viday is, is, is in, in place to maybe have a marina put, uh, where they could dock right there, uh, adjacent to our convention center and maybe come through there. Uh, so, I will put that out there because I was told that face to face. So, I'm excited about that project, uh, developing and, uh, so, that's something that... Pardon? Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's pretty exciting what they're, what they're planning on doing, so. Uh, we'll keep you informed as that develops, so. Any other questions? Okay. There's something called nutrient loading that is, is something they take very seriously and the sediment that's stirred up and... And, you know, those are the things that they, they, uh, that they address and they were concerned about. And it's, it's a complex issue and, and thing, but they are considering talking about starting to dredge again. That, that is on, on the table for them to start dredging again, for sure.
As a result of the seepage water, um, you know, we're gonna have our little friends, the skeeters, coming. Can we go ahead and get kicked off with that mosquito abatement and, and maybe, uh... And intensify it perhaps a little, um...
That is a good point. Lee, you actually started spraying a month ago, didn't you? And some, you were spraying, or was that two months ago? You did spray some though, earlier in this year, didn't you?
We did. And they, when they first came out, it was...
Yeah, they were, they got bad quick. It was either, it was pretty, but they did spray some.
What we're probably gonna have to do on that is we're gonna have to treat the barbin instead of mosquito vaccine. But we have, we have seepage water and that's what, you get, you get the right temperature of water. On the day you were laid last year, I mean, in, in two days, you get mosquito fly. So, we're, we're just probably try it. And then I'll talk to some of my people down in Baton Rouge at mosquito abating program down there and see if there's a, have a, have a mulch that you can spray out and, you know, probably treat some yards. We also, uh, got a, a free update for our, and it's through a grant, the, the Zika virus, it's called the Zika virus grant. They're gonna give us two backpack sprayers, which we can actually go into the backyard to spray for mosquitoes. And they're also gonna give us about five thousand dollars worth of equipment on our truck that it automatically regulates the flow of product coming out. If we slow down the stop sign, it slows the product down. If we speed up, if we go twenty-five miles an hour instead of fifteen, it controls the rate of flow of the product that's going out, so.
Oh, that's great.
And Lee, y'all do a good job on that. And, and does everybody know why they spray in Eden? Because that, what they spray, anything it touches, got wings, it, it'll kill. So, they have to wait until all your, your bees and your healthy, uh, winged insects that are flying around, uh, are going home, going home. So, that's, that's the reason why, so y'all see if you... Gary, go ahead. That would be a DOT.
That'd be a DOTD call, but if, if the levee were to break, it would be, it would...
You gotta ask for that time.
There's a, there's a parent's plan in place that coordinates with the state plan. If the state gets that office, if, if that were to happen, it would be people on the ground quick to help assist elderly. Uh, there's a, there's a plan for, for, uh, animals. There's, there's all kinds...
I understand all that, but if you have both bridges up going in one direction...
That would not be my call, that would be a DOTD call.
But it ought to be done now and not wait and coordinate that. If you wait to the last minute, somebody's gonna get hurt. I'll tell my wife, she works, I don't know what she...
You're prepared, how can you be prepared if you don't know where you're going back?
I'll tell my wife to go through the levee open. If it don't break, go through that fence. You go up on double leg. That's the safest place down here right now, if it breaks. That's what I'm gonna do.
Well, you, I, we've...
You're not coordinated.
Nobody know room over there.
You're not coordinated right now, but you should be.
Well, that, that... Again, 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 just, that's just something that's a personal decision, Gary. Again, we, we don't feel like that, that's a... You know, right, it's, I mean... Well, I mean, that's... Well, it's, it's, it's at fifty-eight and it's go, it's headed down. And it's, uh, you know, we, I just don't wanna cause that lot. All I would say is that, you know, those things would be addressed and be, have time. And we would notify, notify everybody if, if, if something happened to that, to that...
We'll notify it now, what might, would happen. This is what we're trying, um, gonna try to do. We're trying to scare nobody.
Right.
But say if the levee breaks, we're gonna open both levees to go, both bridges to go to one leg.
Well... There's, there's a lot of... Well, there's, I'm, I'm, but there's, there's a lot of other issues that, you might have people... All I'm saying is, Gary, there's a lot of other things that come into play. You might have Viday residents who are working in ashes. You can't close both of them down. You got to, there's, there's, there's coordination and that's something they would control. You see what I'm saying? It depends on, we, we feel like there would be time if something happened. We really do. And, and that's something that we would, we would notify people and give them as that happened, it, it's going forward, so. Huh? Uh, just from all the, some of the, the models that the Corps has, has put out is if you were to have a breach or something to say north of us, that Viday and Clayton would be one of the last places that would probably experience any kind of flooding that it would actually, I, I hadn't sa, I, I've heard where the map runs, but they said we would have, we would have time to, to make some kind of adjustment or make some, you know? Okay. Well, one of the things I did, and I've, I've invited some of our area pastors. Uh, I know back in two thousand and sixteen or fifteen, uh, we had a, a, a prayer time at our convention center uh, to, you know, to ask God to, you know, watch over us and, and keep us safe. And I feel like I believe in, I believe in prayer. I'm a Christian and I, I don't mind saying that and it's gonna go on YouTube and I, but I have asked some of our area pastors to come forward, uh, tonight. And I would like for them to, each one, lead us in, in prayer, uh, to not only just pray for our town, but to also pray for people all up and down the Mississippi River who may be impacted, uh, up the river or even down. And also, just that they will, as leaders, uh, continue to pray for us. Uh, you know, all your leadership, all your town employees, all the people who, uh, worked to, to, to make Viday what it is, as well as the residents who live here, we, you make Vidalia and we work for you. But, uh, I would like to ask those, uh, Pastor Botley, uh, Ron, and I think, is Wes, did Wes make it? Wes, can you, I would love for y'all to come forward. Is any other pastors here from, from our area? Okay. I would love for y'all to come forward and, and, uh, and I'm gonna ask all of us, and after we have prayer, I'm gonna ask them to, to lead us in prayer and have each one of them lead us because these are people who are leaders, uh, for our spiritual and, uh, well-being and also, uh... So, I would like to ask everybody to stand and have each one of them come up and pray for...
Mayor, if I may, may I share a verse of scripture?
Sure, absolutely.
That's very appropriate for us. God's in control, right? And in Psalm ninety-three, it says, "The Lord reigneth; he is clothed with majesty. The Lord is clothed with strength, wherewith he hath girded himself." The world also established that it... then it cannot be moved. Thy throne is established of old, thou art from everlasting. The floods have lifted up, O Lord, the floods have lifted up their voice, the floods lift up their waves. The Lord on high is might, mightier than the noise of many waters, yea, than the mighty waves of the sea. Thy testimonies are sure, holiness becomeeth thine house, O Lord, forever." How appropriate, we know that God is in control. Would you like for me to lead it in a word and prayer?
Sure.
Okay. Father, thank you so much that you are in control of all things, from everlasting and everlasting, you are God. Father, you tell us that we are to prepare to the best of our ability for things like we're faced with now in our town. I thank you for our town leaders, and those who are in, uh, charge of, uh, helping us and leading us. Lord, you're leading them and help us to follow their leadership, but above all, we know that you're in control, so may we make our personal preparations for this and just trust you. Father, you can cause rivers to rise and to fall, and Father, I pray that you be merciful to us, we've seen you work mightily in our behalf in the past, and that gives us assurance that you'll work for us now. So may we trust you, we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
This is Angel Cologne, these are Hispanic missionaries, we have to have the word of praise.
Oh, yeah. I tried to pray, pray, uh, pray in, in English, but, uh, you know, I speak a lot of Spanish. I want to pray in Spanish, uh, do you know, I want to speak with God, really? And, uh, this is really happened in the life, how, is God have a control or hold on our life? We believe in God and we trust God, okay? I want to pray in Spanish, it's more easy for me, okay? Padre, te damos gracias por este momento, señor, que tú permites que pueda orar en este lugar, señor. Primeramente por este pueblo de Vidalia, señor, por los líderes de este lugar, y por todos aquellos que vivimos en este lugar, señor, que tú nos has dado para poder continuar, señor, la vida. Le pedimos que nos ayude, señor, en cualquier momento de crisis, pero sabemos que cualquier situación que pase, tú tienes el control y nos ayudarás, padre. No permitas que nada contrario, señor, que tú tengas en tus planes venga a ocurrir, padre mío. Controla todas las cosas, controlas aguas, controla todo que pueda venir, señor, y glorícate sobre este pueblo, y bendice a cada vida, señor, que se encuentra en este lugar. Padres, confiamos completamente en ti, y sabemos que tú, señor, lo harás para la gloria y honra de tu santo nombre, y en Cristo Jesús oramos. Amen, señor, amen. Thank you, I appreciate it.
That's Wes?
Prayer. Father, we pray specifically over our leaders right now. We thank you for leaders who are thinking through plans, uh, we thank you for the Corps of Engineers, we thank you for FEMA, we thank you for our congressman, and right now, Lord, we pray for wisdom. We pray that as they, um, make plans, as they look forward, as they forecast the river, would you give them wisdom on how to lead us? Father, we pray for Chief Merrill, Lord, we pray that you would give him wisdom and protect our police officers in the event that they react. Father, we pray for our linemen, we pray for our plumbers, we pray for our city employees who, who will walk through and deal with any flood that may come, but, Lord, we place each one of these men in your hands, we pray your protection over them, we pray that you would give them wisdom, patience, and strength, it's in your name I pray, amen.
Lord, we thank you today, we thank you, we heard the prayers, and we praise your name for everything that you've done for us, but at this moment, we want to thank you for the flood that did not happen, we want to thank you for the emergency that we did not have to be ruled with. God, we thank you for the lives that have been spared already, because you're omnipotent, you're Alpha and Omega, you already know what's going to happen. So we don't pray for your will to change, we pray that you give us the discernment to know when and where things are going to happen. We ask that, that this flood brings us together, binds us closer together, because where there is unity, there is strength. At this time, O God, we want to thank you for every person, every leader, every citizen, allow us, O God, to know that not only during this time, but every day, we shall thank you for life. So we pray right now that you guide us, protect us throughout all born and danger, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Spiritual leadership is, is just as important as, as any other leadership, and thank you